This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 11th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. And if we could all say the Pledge of Allegiance, wherever you are, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. It's always hard to do on Zoom. So good. Anyone here for Citizen Speak? I'm not seeing anybody in the faces and names that I see on the screen, so I'm going to assume not. Can we proceed and call in the Finance Committee, call yourselves to order, or do you need to wait until Becky's there?
Yeah, I think we need to wait until Becky's here.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, all right. So we'll continue on, and when we see her, we'll just do that, I think. So Scott, I think we'll turn it over to you. Basically tonight, my understanding is we're going to be focusing mostly on the revenue projections. We basically have heard pretty much the various department hearings. Here comes Becky right now. Perfect timing. Just give it a second. Hey, Becky. We were just waiting on you so you guys could call yourselves to order. So I'll let, I'll let, Reggie, you want to take that and call the Finance Team to order?
Yes, it is 6:01. Becky, you good?
Close enough. So Becky and Doug, you want to unmute yourselves for a minute? I think you can. Yeah.
Here we go. So we need a second. I'll second that. We'll start the meeting for the Finance Committee.
All right. Good. I think we're both in, in session. So as I was saying, basically, we'll let Scott take the lead on this. We had quite a few of the department hearings already. We may have a couple of small things to, to finish up. A couple of things that maybe somebody forgot to present or whatever. I don't know of anything, but there may be something in the wings, just in case. But basically, we've gotten through all those. We've heard everybody's requests, and tonight we wanted to get a sense, I think, of the revenues and where we are vis a vis the requests, and trying to figure out, you know, where we may have to do some creative budgeting here. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you. Steven is now joined too. So Select Board has a full board, and I see various members of the public, including our Police Chief and our Highway Superintendent and our Treasurer and our Town Clerk at least. So we'll call them in at some point. If, I think we may need the Treasurer's help at some point. But Scott, I'll let you go forward.
Okay, so we spent the last four or five meetings talking about money leaving. Now we're going to start talking about money coming in. So this is, I sent it out earlier. It's, it's a little bit, I put it in PDF just so I couldn't send it out as Excel because everything is linked to all the different Excel sheets in the folder. So if you need access, just let me know. But starting with the biggest chunk of money that we have for revenue, it's going to be our levy limit. And kind of looking at everything again today, we came in with $16.166 million. And I'll show you how we arrived at that. So based on our levy limit. So last year's levy limit was $15,229, and then we also had on top of that roughly a $231,000 debt exclusion, which was for a loader, a truck, Norris School, and Layer B renovations. So a 2%, 2.5% increase, which were allowed by law, would bring our levy limit up to $15.610 million. Our assessors gave us a new growth estimate for the next fiscal year of $180,000. The three-year average was a little bit over $177,000, so Dave felt that that was an accurate amount. Our debt exclusion from last year and then added on with the Zero College Highway came out to be $423,000. And then our overlay, which is stuff that we're not going to get tax revenue for, which you have to deduct, and that's going to be our five-year average. And that's a little bit over $97,000 that we deducted. So that total came out to be a little bit over $16 million this year. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would just suggest if people have questions, as kind of Scott goes through, it's probably easier to ask as we go along rather than waiting until the end. So if you do, I may not see everybody's hand raised. So feel free to just shout at me, and I'll give you the floor. How's that? Okay, not seeing anybody? So go ahead, Scott.
All right, so moving on. So that's, that's going to be like the, the biggest driver of our budget. The next part is our motor vehicle excise, which the assessors came in at $1.2 million. It's a little bit more than the 13% increase over last year. And then moving on from that, we have our interests and penalties.
Well, Scott, so I'd be curious as to, we've, just looking at the historical data, we've, we've never been that high. So they have, do they already have commitments that they, they really think we're gonna go exceed and have one of the highest years we've ever had?
Dave thinks so. I, he's always gonna, he always gives a little bit more conservative numbers on most of the stuff, especially in new growth. I double-checked with Dave, and he thought 1.2 was, was a good number for next year. Next up is our interests and penalties, which are usually collected from if you pay your things late, our payment in lieu of taxes, our meals tax, mostly from, which come from our restaurants. It's that percentage that you paid in addition to your meal.
Scott, I have the same question there. Again, historically, we've never gotten to $70,000. I'm not aware of any new restaurants. Are we also proposing increasing the meals tax?
Yes. I think we're, I mean, we're trending for the first six months, we're trending at 60%, so we're 10% above where we were before. So through January 1st, we collected $36,000. So we would be on, on track to actually go a little bit more than 70.
So did, did anybody actually do a work paper on that and show by, because we get decades turnover monthly, correct? The meals tax back quarterly? And look at what the historical trend, because I would expect December to be heavy. I would expect January and February would be light. I, I just question if our norm is 65,000. I mean, even if you take the, the two actuals and the, and the budgeted and you average that, it's a significant jump to bake into the budget. And this is going to be my reoccurring question as we go down these lines. Like the, you know, the cannabis tax next, right?
Yep, we'll get to that one. I think maybe on the, on the meals tax, I don't know if Dave would have done any, any worksheet on that, Scott. If not, maybe we could have him write up or give us something that shows us how he's getting there, other than just sort of this.
Chris, is Dave the assessor?
Doubling up. Huh? Sorry?
Dave, the assessor? Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the assessor's office.
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's, given, you know, the increase in food cost and the revenues up to January 1st, I thought that, you know, 70,000 might be a relatively a safe number.
Oh, sorry. Who's, who's actually producing that number, though, Scott? It's not the assessor?
That's, no, that's me.
That's you? Okay. Okay. Well, I think that, you know, I think John's point about a seasonality issue there with Christmas holidays, Christmas, New Years, that might be something to just think about. But, you know, we collected fair amount over the Thanksgiving, Christmas holiday, but, you know, is that really something we can bank on to go that much higher? I mean, I can see some, some increase, but I'm not sure about going all the way to 70, but that's a question. So go ahead.
Room tax, we don't have a lot of rooms in Southampton. I think we only have a, we only have a few bed and breakfast, and then we, we had an Airbnb. So that's, it's not a whole lot. For the cannabis tax, historically, we've collected $150,000. To date, we, we collect a little bit over what our estimates would be at $86,000. So I was estimating about $165,000.
Well, and that might reflect their expansion up there as well. Are they radically doing more business?
Yeah, and I think cannabis is probably not as seasonal as, as meals.
True.
No.
Go ahead, John.
Well, I just, so I'm, so really you were looking at year-to-date number and then kind of doubling it because it's six months in, rounding it down? Was kind of the, the thought process?
For those, yes. For the taxes.
So I would, I mean, I would think the, because we have actual historical data of 24 or 36 months, that we could kind of look at that, and, and we may end up with the same number, but I'd be more comfortable if we had like a work paper behind it to show, here's the trends, the ups and flows. Because again, you know, 10% growth. Maybe. That's, I'll put some thought on that, maybe send you something.
Okay. Yeah. Anybody else? I'm just, before you go on, Scott, anybody else have any questions? I'm just looking, Cindy, Dan, Reggie, Doug, anybody offhand?
No, I think John has covered my questions so far.
Okay.
I, I don't have a question, but it seems to me that I'm hearing on the news that people are going out and, you know, going to restaurants, traveling more, et cetera. That's a guess, but I, I did hear a story about that on National Public Radio, so I don't know if that's happening in Southampton, whether the restaurants are seeing more business.
Yeah, you, I would just say the general, for what we have in business in town, right? We're, we're really talking about one significant restaurant, and those are smaller ones, right? So they suffer, they don't suffer, but they're impacted by dry January. And then in February, early March, a lot of people are waiting for their tax returns to come back. So they scale back on going out. And then you see, you see it build back up the second week of March into April. I'm just saying that, you know, January, February don't typically follow the other 10 months on expenses. I would expect them to be lower. And I can't comment on cannabis. That's not my market.
We can probably find some historical data there just to solidify that a little bit better, maybe?
For the other, for departmental revenue, most of it's relatively level. The other licenses, I took last year's number here and over. The alcoholic beverage licenses as well, we, we'll have the Pooza's Market, but I, I did 14250, carrying that over there. Treasure Collector Gin, about 7,500 from revenue from Treasure Collector. Generally, they only bring in, last year, about $7,000. Building permits, I actually originally had this one a little bit lower. Ron had said a couple of months ago that they started to slow down. I checked in with them last week, and he said they're actually back on the upswing. So I didn't do as, as much as last year. So I thought 115 was a little bit of a conservative number. Board of Health, we have to reorganize how we do their fees as well, because last year we changed it into a, into the revolving fund. So most of the, the fees actually go into there, and they can spend up to the $60,000. So I, I actually took those out for the departmental revenue until we can decide if we're going to split that so that we can maybe put a, a bit aside for inspectional services for Charlie, who's kind of like the specialist, and then the others that are just reoccurring fees, you know, food inspections, food truck inspections, things like that would just go into a separate fund. And if we did that, then we just would need to recalculate that. Plumbing inspections and electrical inspections carried it just roughly about the same. Police Department. We're trending a little bit higher. So we put 18,000. Solicitation permits, only $250. And our Fire Department inspections, 11,000. Last year, we, we budgeted 12,000. We're, we're a little bit below, so I thought 11,000 was, was a good number. Town Clerk, again, I budgeted conservatively. Over the last three years, the lowest that we received was 5,587. So the 5,500, because we're trending a little bit lower, would be, would be fair.
Got one up on the highway.
Oh, sorry. Highway fees, I carried over, I level-funded those from the previous fiscal year. And we're trending a little bit higher than the $6,000, but I thought it's not a huge amount of money, but I thought that would be just, just a good, good effort. Board of Assessors is about $200. They don't bring a lot. The Chancellor from ambulance fees, so currently, we've had our busiest month ever with the ambulance services. We generally carry over, transfer about, last two years, about $250,000 from that. It is something that's paid directly to the town, so the town does directly fund the ambulance and emergency services, and then we collect fees. And generally, those are held in, we, we do use in the past some of it for an ambulance stabilization fee. We also use a little bit for, in case we are unable to respond to an ambulance due to our ambulance not being certified, which the chief was able to get last month. So we no longer have to do a contract with Westfield or East Hampton to pay about $500 for every time that we would need them. So with the 325,000 would be transferred from ambulance fees. The school aid, that is the governor's estimate for right now. The school budget's still being worked on, obviously. School transportation, charter tuition reimbursement, those are kind of up a little bit from the previous two years, but it's, it's down from last year. So we did reach a high of about $165,000, but it's trending downwards.
Scott, are all those numbers right there taken off the governor's budget?
The school aid, yes. Yeah. And then unrestricted government aid, Medicaid reimbursement, and then unrestricted government aid. So we don't know what the, what the rest of the legislature is going to do. So these are what we have for right now.
Okay.
Sorry. Veterans benefits, pretty much right around $12,000 this year. Tax exemptions, and then our state-owned land. We roughly get a little bit, little bit more than 17,000. I have to talk to the chief. I'm not sure why our fines from District Court are so high this year, but that seems to be the most popular one, that is the biggest increase. So I figured 7,500. Our earnings on investment, I played a little bit more conservatively. The last two years, we reached a quarter of a million dollars. The previous year, we only had 122,000. Honestly, I don't know what's going to happen in the next couple of months. So that's the number that we'll probably have to revisit by the time we hit annual town meeting. Our FRTA indirect cost, miscellaneous revenue, our school busing fees, those have all been right around the average of the last three years. And our PEG programming, which is the money that you get on your cable bill, and that goes towards our, I believe PEG is public education. I have to double-check it, but it does. Just make sure I get that right. Public educational and governmental access television. So that's basically goes directly to our East Hampton media. And then finally, other financing sources. We have like our septic betterments, enterprise indirect costs. Those I'm still working on with the Water Department. I don't have them in yet from the transfer station, but the transfer station is relatively small. Historically, we've gotten about 157,000 from the Water Department, but we're looking at it a little bit more townwide and what the actual impact has been. So I estimate it should be right around 165,000. And then we have the $175,000 for the, for the dispatch grant.
Scott, Chief Williamsworth is here. If you wanted to ask a question about the District Court fines, I don't know. Ian, can you say anything to that?
Yeah, I think I would have to say it's, we've had an increase in motor vehicle fines that we've given out. I want to say even almost by 50 to 75% in the last, at least the last calendar year. I, I think that's probably what the reason is.
You think that's a reasonable number to estimate?
I don't know, because I don't, I don't track fines from District Court for civil motor vehicle infractions. And oftentimes, the District Court will, they typically, probably 90% of the time, they, they reduce the fine to a certain amount. While you were, I was just actually going into my records to see if I can come up with some more data with, for this, and I'll get back to you within the next 15 minutes or so.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Scott. Thanks.
So that takes us to our revenues of about $22.548 million. If everything, if everything holds up, I do expect some changes in the next couple of months, especially with the legislature. I don't know what's going to happen with school aid. You know, last year, there were some initial cuts to some of our grants. The state delegation doesn't think that will happen this year, but I'm kind of cautiously optimistic.
But our school transportation right now, you've only got, is it 4,000 in there? Is that right? So that's quite.
Yes.
As opposed to 12 last time?
I'm not sure.
That, that line item is for school transportation above and beyond the contract. If we go to field trips, if we, and we charge the students $20 a head.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And I think there is, there is a part, piece in there for school choice, children from outside Southampton that are able to get to a Southampton school bus stop. For Norris, there's a fee, it's like 100 bucks a year or something like that.
Okay. But I guess I was just looking at the difference between the 12,000 and the 4,000. I mean, is it, wise to keep it that low, or should it be, should we be thinking that that would be modified at some point in time to be a bit higher? I guess I'm curious.
Could you ask the user how many field trips she plans on doing next year?
Yeah, the 3,000 was a couple of years ago, right? So.
Yeah.
That would have been kind of COVID-ish time, yeah. And those figures are coming out of Central Office or from the principal at Norris?
Let me bring up the cherry sheet one second.
You probably have to stop sharing one here.
I thought I downloaded it. Excuse me.
Well, you know, if, if that's on the cherry sheet, that's going to be different. That's going to be reimbursement from the state.
Sorry. Yeah. I have to, probably just, I'll double-check with that number, but I usually take a little bit more conservative approach with those. John, I'm not sure what you would recommend on that one.
I, well, I think if it's the, if, like those, the state rep from school choice aid to whatever's underneath tax exemption, we should probably just plug in what the governor's put in the number for now, right? Because that whole section there is coming from the governor's budget. And then as it moves through the process and they true up those numbers, we could adjust.
Let me be sure.
I know traditionally, when it was ed, we always put the governor's numbers in, and then we never, we never deviated from that. So we always ended up with a little bit more money built in there that came into free cash.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. And then, so the charter reimbursement, sorry. Couldn't see that. 45? Okay, up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you plugged in, I guess?
Yeah.
45, yeah. Okay. Okay. So 22 million thereabouts. What, what was the bottom line from last year? We were at 21 something last year?
So the grand total, oh, from last year, I can pull that up. So we're at 22.53 million for this year.
That, well, that bottom line there was 21.9 or something, was it not? Or no?
22.530.
Right, no, but the one, the, yeah, the 21.518, is that not our, is that last year's?
Like, let me bring up last year's number.
Okay.
So this was our original 21.04.
049? Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So that's the, that's the revenues. And the impact that would actually have on the budget. Estimating about 4% increase for Hampshire Regional. The superintendent mentioned that it would, they got it down to right around 4%. So I just did a rough estimate of that. And then I don't have Norris's schools, so I did put in the 2%. Not sure what that's going to be either. But that gives us a deficit of a little under $200,000.
Just, can you tell me what percentage that is? It's probably really small, right?
About 10, a little bit under 10%.
Okay. And this is based on, basically, everybody's asks, right? So, you know, based on all the budget hearings we've heard.
Yeah, there was, there was a few that I did just. Yeah, there was there was a few that I did just just making sure all the formulas played right. So I did reduce some from cemetery and parks, but it's not that much. So mostly everything is as they requested.
Okay.
So I I have a question on this work board here workbook. The headers up on top. Approved total. Is is that because this is the document that ultimately is going to get published? Like, we haven't voted on these yet and locked these numbers in?
Yeah, right. That was me just making sure everything was working.
Yep, okay.
So these are each of the cells are tied into the individual budgets worksheet. So if you cut in a budget, it'll adjust it.
Right. And then ultimately, this will be used as the final product that gets published in some shape or form.
Yeah, this will be the cover sheet.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I will publish the individual budgets as well in the budget book.
Yeah. So we're at a point where we need to try to take a look and see where we might pare down some funds to get get our one hundred and ninety eight thousand deficit out of the way. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, and these were adjusted today. So we did have a little bit of an increase in employee benefits that Jen changed. We had a few additions last month over at Norris School. They hired some people. So that went up by about, I think, twenty or thirty thousand dollars from her initial estimate.
And what line is that, Scott? Sorry?
That's under employee benefits.
Okay. All right. So Jen, I think you're here tonight. I think I saw you. Do you want to add anything while you're here? I think I saw her at some point, yeah. Jennifer, if you want to say anything about insurance or whatever you've gone through on some of these calculations. Okay, not hearing Jen, but if she wants to chime in, she can, but I'll let Scott go ahead then.
Okay. So ultimately, we're at this number right here. I think there's a few different ways that we can start looking at it. Most of our costs this year have really been like an increase in hours and wages on the municipal side. We haven't taken into account anything from the Council on Aging Grants that were mentioned and a few other sources. The only difference is I just was the cemetery and the Parks Commission, which is about thirty thirty or twenty or thirty thousand dollars. But any other revenue that, you know, what we would put into balance the budget such as grants, I would put into the this spreadsheet right here. Although it won't be the final for the state, but to help us keep track. So things like, you know, ambulance stabilization, COA grants, things like that, if we want to transfer into it. So I can make a separate column.
So you'd be trying to show those as offsets? Is that right?
That's right.
So right now, the budget, the budget shows that we're paying one hundred percent of COA expenses, for example.
Right.
And we're not utilizing the state grant at all.
Correct.
It's not factored in there now? Yeah.
No.
In the math, yeah.
And it's the same for the library? Are we are we? Because, right, they get the they get the library state aid, which I realize really only covers the membership in the state program, but it are we paying a hundred percent of, you know? How much do those those numbers add up to altogether? Because?
On the library?
Well, and those are just the two that I'm thinking of. I think the library is around twelve and the COA thirty two thousand? Can you just roll up Scott? So many dollars per citizen, but.
Yeah, I know we had, I think none of the library money goes toward salaries, though, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So twenty eight thousand?
Twenty eight.
Okay, Scott, where where do you want to go with that then? I don't know about the library, but I think they they do get their their state aid money because we had to be sure of that formula, right? So.
Yeah, and those are just the two that come to my mind. I don't know how many other grants offsets. I guess I'd have to look at last year's budget.
Yeah.
To see what do we typically use?
I think we were finding in a couple of these presentations with revolving funds. There was something maybe in, I believe it was parks and cemetery, for example, funds or maybe even Conservation Commission funds that have not been tapped into in the past, but possibly some of them could be used for at least a portion of operating expenses or special projects depending on the need. So that was a question I think that we still need to clarify perhaps, but.
I think you're right, Chris. There may be some available funds for special projects. But I think for ordinary annual expenses, it might be limited. I have not yet found the relevant documents. But we can take that offline. It is something to be researched for sure.
Well, I know Bradley's working on some of it. So, yeah, but anyway, I agree.
Scott, you're still mute or you're muted again?
Yeah, if you're trying to show us something, yep.
Oh, God. So this was last year's. I just want to show you last year's budget spreadsheet. Most of the time, they
This is twenty twenty three, though, Scott. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it goes all the way to.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Twenty five, historical stuff. So one of the things I just wanted to show was the actual cost of the department budgets and then have the grant offset rather than having the request be offset automatically by the grant. So just like we had with the Council on Aging, how they've only budgeted twenty five hundred dollars for their operating expenses, when it's actually more in the offset up by the Friends Group and state funding grant. Even though we didn't touch that specific one, that's generally how it's been in the past.
Right. But if we're going to put a hundred percent of the expenses in, then we've got to put a hundred percent of all revenue sources in.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think we were trying to get an idea, John, of, you know, what does it really cost to run these various departments that, you know, we're I think we hadn't really had a good picture on that in the past. So that was what we were trying to look at this year as we met with the different presenters for their budgets.
I agree with all of you that we need to look at the full cost of each department. And we need to get the full perspective on all the sources of revenue. I mean, if we're going to collect eight percent of our budget from miscellaneous, as yet unnamed sources, it would be really rough to start looking at a ten percent cut out of the starting gate. And those are just made up numbers. I have no idea what they are.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Scott, go ahead with what your thought process was here?
Yep. So some of the grants that we have are pretty secure so that we I actually, you know, for our purposes, we would include them as as revenue. Although they're going to be used to offset some of our costs. There we go. So what we would do is these are just other financing sources that I classified them as for our own discussion. If we did want to use some of the COA grants towards instead of the general funds, we would put that in here and kind of decide how we want to do it going forward. The other thing that I just wanted to mention was the ambulance stabilization. We have about one hundred and six thousand dollars in there. That was started, I believe it was about ten or fifteen years ago, and there's been a little bit of money that was put into it, and that was for the purposes of purchasing purchasing an ambulance. Unfortunately, you know, an ambulance is over five hundred thousand dollars at this point. And we're probably going to be looking at alternative ways to fund it than saving up for it because we haven't put any money into the ambulance stabilization in about four or five years. So that money might be better used elsewhere. But we'd have to have town meeting approve any transfer out of it.
So Scott, this this money would have been something that we would have normally put in on every budget budget preparation to put a portion aside for ambulance stabilization, just like we do for capital stabilization operational. We definitely haven't been doing it in my recollection of being on the board, but this is this is something that had been going on for a number of years and it has only gotten to a hundred thousand.
That's right.
I know that's not my memory is not that way. Yes, we were printing money in, but the source was at the end of the year, unspent line items that ambulance receipt funds went to. And the money would because if you if we appropriate ambulance receipt monies of two twenty five or whatever the number is and we don't spend it, it can't fall out to the bottom line. It has to go back.
Has to go back to that's what I was trying to.
And then and then I thought we were doing a second vote of annually, a percentage of those surplus receipts went into that ambulance fund. That I don't think any of it came from the general fund.
Yeah, okay. No, I thought I thought too that that whenever we didn't spend anything that we had planned for for ambulance, it had to go back into the stabilization fund. So it's it's not necessarily large amounts that go in there at any given time. So that could, you know, explain why it really hasn't built up much, Scott, I think.
I mean, one of the things is our, I mean, our ambulance runs out of deficits or fines don't offset the costs.
Yeah.
So I mean, it would be almost impossible to take any surplus that we get from running the ambulance and putting it into that fund.
Well, a hundred thousand could be a down payment on an ambulance, no?
Twenty percent. Let's lease one.
Well, a little bit less to finance.
No, I mean, it's the other four hundred thousand, which we we obviously wouldn't have enough in capital and our capital stabilization to to afford. So you'd have to lay some long term borrowing or something like that.
Yeah.
But even that's going to be pretty expensive.
Yeah. Well, and if I recall, Chief Fosoli, we have a what a leaky fuel tank or something right now that they're trying to repair?
Yeah.
And that there is an ambulance that's due should have been I think it was planned on their capitalist for replacement this year or next year. So we're at time for replacement and we really aren't ready with funding to replace it at this point in time. Okay. So are you suggesting anything with this hundred thousand, Scott? I'm not sure where you're going with that.
I'm thinking that we could, and we have a lot of capital expenses. Once we get a capital plan together, we can, it would probably be better spent on some of our more pressing needs, like our heating system for the DPW garage. That's going to be over six figures, probably for annual town meeting. And we have to kind of look at the bigger ticket items like the, you know, tanker trucks, the ambulance, some of our DPW equipment, like the street cleaner, you know, we're looking at in the millions of dollars for our basic capital needs at this point. When we take everything together.
The problem with that ambulance enterprise account is that it's restricted. Once it goes in there, it's completely restricted. Right? So it can only be spent on an ambulance or ambulance equipment per se. But the just shifting topics for a second. So the other financing sources here. And I and I realize, you know, there's a couple of things to add in there, but two, three, maybe three hundred and fifty thousand. Last year's budget. We have one point three million and other financial sources. And then at two point two million in local receipts. And I I wanted to today at lunch, but I didn't have time. I was going to go through and do the comparisons and see where we are percentage wise to last year's budget. But it just it seems like there's something missing. And it might it might just be our ARPA pieces that we used, and maybe that just explains all why we were so high in twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty five.
Yeah, I do think that plays a part of it, like our conservation agent, you know, that's half of the salary was based on that, our program coordinator salary in the COA that was based that is based on ARPA funds, so.
Yeah, but do you think ARPA funds accounted for a million dollars?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, maybe maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand could be attributed to ARPA. And is there anything left in ARPA? Has those matching funds come back? I mean, we've got to spend them anyways. That's more of an open.
Yeah, one set of the of the Clean Water Grant money back, I believe, around fifty eight thousand. I think there was another twenty five thousand to bill on that to get back from the state, and I don't think I've seen whether Ty and Bond has billed that yet. I've lost track of that for the last month or so. But there should be something coming back. I think our question was, given that ARPA technically, you know, we had to obligate things by the end of December, although the full expense can be done through twenty twenty six, it wasn't clear what to do with these reimbursable funds where they should sit. So we're still not clear on that, I think. At least I'm not. You know, if they could go back into the ARPA fund and still be re respent somehow, I don't know that they can. From what I've read, but I'm not the authorization expert on that one by any means.
Yeah, we're still waiting for some guidance from federal government, how they want to handle any unspent funds from the ARPA.
Yeah.
So I'd be a little bit cautious spending anymore right now until we find out.
Right. I mean, essentially, we've got a handful. I mean, there's probably ten offhand, no more than ten projects that are kind of ongoing that have some money still you know, allocated to spend, and that's good. Many of the projects have finished. But there were a couple that were grant related where we had to pull out the full amount of the money ourselves. And then, you know, get reimbursed. And so that's those are the couple that we're trying to query there. Yeah.
I I wouldn't include our in our other financing sources for this year, because there'd be a restriction on how we could spend it.
Right, yeah.
So John, just as far as sorry, did I cut somebody off?
No, go ahead. Yep.
So with that, that being the recommendation, I think we need to look at what positions last year. Because there's there's two things, right? There's a physical expense to do a study. That's a one time thing that we used ARPA money for. That's not going to repeat. But where we used ARPA money for payroll dollars. I think all those positions need to be the first ones we look at. Is do we keep them going or not? Because and some of them, maybe we keep them all. But, you know, the intent was to spin them up, get them started and to see if they could self sustain. Very similar to the neurodiversity program at Norris, right? We got that to a point. Because I think we look at those spots and make a decision, do we want to keep those going or not? Because we want to keep those going. And we got to find right now two hundred thousand dollars to cut here. And that's assuming that our state numbers don't get worse. I don't want to be cutting a position of a long term body that's been funded by the general fund to save a new spot.
Yep. I think and what I'm recalling, so we had two or three positions, at least three positions out of the school out of ARPA, but those those ended pretty much. They ended last June, July, or in a couple, one of them might have gone a couple of months longer, but basically all the money that we had put aside for the special education behavioral analyst and all those kinds of positions that we did fund for a couple of years, those have all finished as far as I know. We're not spending any more on those. The ongoing two, I think we still have a little bit of money that's being put toward the the planning board consultant as well as the conservation agent. Out of our ARPA money, there was a separate earmark of ARPA money from Senator Velez's office that was directly to the COA. And that I've they're using that on one staffing person and some other things, I believe. Have to go back and look at that narrative. I don't have it in front of me for the COA on that one.
I do want to just mention the the conservation agent ARPA money is expired. We're now into the general funds for that one.
We're in the general fund on that one. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
One of the things that we were talking about earlier about with the position, although we're right, you know, obviously, we're currently negative two hundred thousand dollars, but one of the important things that we were looking at is potentially bringing on a land use planning position. So it would be a combination of a land use planner, someone to handle planning department, conservation, ZBA, work with the assessors, the building department and the Board of Health for potential zonings or other fines. Basically, a person of all trades. uh, fines, um, basically a, a person of all trades.
Um, that'd be great.
Right now, it's, it's a lot for our volunteers, given that the growth, you know, growth of the town, especially in like the planning department, there it, it's, it's a lot to ask for, for a volunteer board, especially, you know, Paul's been doing it for a long time now, um, but God forbid he's we, he doesn't do it and we, and we lose all that knowledge, uh, it'd be significant. So, um, if we could this year, you know, I think one of our, our biggest additions would probably be a, a, a position like that if we can somehow find it in the budget. And, you know, we might be able to combine the, uh, the amount of money that we pay for the, uh, planning, um, contractor and then the conservation agent, um, you know, I think that would get us probably about fifty percent of what a salary would be.
Mm-hmm.
So is there a way to put that in a?
A new position though? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Go ahead. Uh, was it Dan? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying, is there a way to model that in this budget?
Uh, I certainly could. Um, I can go back, I can, I'm not sure where we would put it. Uh, I would probably probably put it under this either select board or the town administrator budget, the actual cost of the position, uh, just because it's gonna be working for different boards. Um, so if we put it under the planning board, it might be a little bit, you know, too heavy on planning versus conservation. So, uh, I mean, it's really gonna be an entire, it's, it's really a position for the entire town um, to help with, so.
Yeah, I, I think if you put it in, it should be under the town administrator and town administrator should have the direct line. It can have dotted lines to the other committees, but ultimately it's what's in the best interest of the town that's as directed by the select board who instructs the town administrator to carry out those orders.
Mm-hmm.
Would be my suggestion.
I strongly agree.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Stephen. Okay. All right, um, I'm thinking just back briefly on the, um, I'd have to check it, but I think on the ARPA money for the COA, I believe that's going toward their outreach worker. Um, that covers that, uh, salary or, or most of it. And I don't think that's a position that they're actually interviewing for now. It's been vacant for a while. Um, and so that's the ARPA money from Senator Velez's office for that position. So that'll go through at this full year, I think. So this, next year at this time, I think we definitely need to be thinking about how we could be possibly picking up some of the cost of the um, of that outreach worker, because that money will expire in about a year, a little over a year's time, year and a half, maybe, I think.
I think we have about two years, uh, no more than two years is what Kate said. Uh, but I can add that, um, I can add that grant because we do have it. I can add that into the other financing sources.
Yeah.
For this year.
Yeah. Okay. And I think the other thing we had, the only thing that's different is that we had two or three places where people had higher, um, expense requests maybe, um, and we talked about maybe a couple of them going to capital rather than coming out of the general fund, and I'm trying to remember who they were. Sorry, um.
Um, cemetery, parks and, um, it may have been police. Uh, Ian, did you have anything for capital from your budget that you could, that we were transitioning?
No, I, I did not. No. The only thing I put in for, um, it was only the cruisers for a cruiser for, in capital, that was it.
Okay.
Nothing on the ground.
Yeah, okay.
But the, uh, you talk, I, I'd have to go back and look and see what the specific requests are, but s- cemetery, I don't know what the balance is, but cemeteries has that continual perpetuation on care, right? Where by statute, they can draw down X percent annually for the, for the general care and upkeep. Um, I mean, even if that covered the five thousand dollars that Randall says it costs to cut the grass, although I think he contracted it out now.
I believe so, yeah.
That would be something else to look at. And parks and rec, that, right, they've got their three revolving accounts. Um, which I believe currently they're, they're using to cover. I don't know what they're asking for, and that might be a capital issue, but.
Uh, let me, I can bring it up. Uh, one thing with the cemetery, they also have the, uh, the sale of plots.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, the sale of plots again by statute, X percentage of that has to go into that account every year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Was that Reggie or I'm sorry, who did I hear?
Uh, Randall.
Randall, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, the, we're not contracting out the, um, cemetery, and I believe it's much higher than five grand. That was for a limited amount of events, and that's when I was tracking it back oh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen. That's very old data.
Okay. Yeah. So, yeah, one of, one of the things, thanks Randall, one of the things, um, John, I remember here now with, uh, Robert's presentation was to basically get software to, to convert all of the laborious handwritten records of the cemetery into, uh, get some software to convert those, to digitize those records, because everything right now is written in this ginormous book by hand. And so that was a six thousand dollar request, but we were wondering if that, for example, could be possibly a capital request. That might have been the one we were looking at. And then the new area design one, because they're looking at trying to figure out how to expand the cemetery. Um, given the needs that are happening, um, they might be able to take some of that out of one of their revolving funds. That was what they were, I think, you know, wondering too. I mean, I think that's where Scott and Bradley were trying to figure that out with, uh, with the cemetery commission.
Yeah, I think that we could take these two at the very least out of capital.
Or one of them at least. I don't know about both, but yeah, I mean, depending. I don't know. But yeah.
So, but, eh, okay. I mean, that's like, we're just, we're shifting the problem over to capital that we only has a hundred and something thousand in it. We just heard we have over a million dollars of what I would classify as priority.
Yeah.
Capital purchases to do. Um, I mean, cemetery records, depending how far they go back, is that a historical thing? I mean, are there, are there other ones out there to preserve historical records?
I don't know.
And, and again, just weighing the priorities.
Yep.
I think it's, it's a great project to do, and if we had the extra money, I'd be all for it, but we need a half a million dollars for an ambulance.
So I think Chris, uh, accurately recounted what we had discussed previously, and I always appreciate John's sharp pencil perspective. I tru- truly do. And, uh, hopefully following in that same theme, I wonder if um, for the records of the cemetery, this ought to be the ripest request of the community preservation committee, uh, for historic preservation. I mean, it has an operational imperative. That's what we heard from cemetery commission, but it, it truly, this is the oldest oldest public cemetery in Massachusetts. It's, it's insane. It's, it's, it's something that we really, and you know, if we start digging up corpses, uh, in a rush to bury more people, that's not a good site. So, um, I, you know, this is not a lot of money out of that account at CPA. That's my two cents.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I don't recall if they had tried that avenue yet. I don't think they had.
But this, this is Becky. Um, this seems like a project that is prime for, um, a grant, and I know there's like John was saying, lots of preservation grants and things out there. Um, that's my first comment. My second comment is, I'm gonna have to leave for my other meeting, so I think we're gonna have to adjourn the finance committee meeting.
Okay. So does that mean finance cannot be asking questions at all? Or what does that mean, guys? If you don't have a quorum, we don't make any decisions?
I'm pretty sure they can still participate. They just can't make decisions.
Can't vote on anything. Right, yeah. Okay. So you guys want to then make a motion to adjourn your meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Sorry, I have to go.
Thanks, Becky.
Yep.
All right.
So, so Chris, I, I was told by the town clerk that we really should not participate in terms of being able to ask questions. I don't know what the general feeling is about that.
I mean, my, my understanding had been more deliberation and deliberation for me is more like voting on something. I, I don't know that asking questions violates it, but, uh, Scott, maybe you know better than I do, or John?
I, I would probably say asking questions is okay. Discussions, I would probably limit it to no discussions.
I move that the select board invite the continued participation of individual members of the FINCOM. As members of the public and in light of their particular expertise as we discuss um, the proposed budget, uh, without the finance committee taking any votes. That was verbose, I'm sorry.
All right. We do have a motion. Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Select board?
Lumber, aye.
Valley, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Donson, aye.
All's aye. Okay, so be it. Thank you. Okay, let's continue.
So I, I had a question. I think Chris, Chris brought it up earlier too, is just whether each of the departments has looked through any funds that they control and whether any of that money can be spent on this year's expenses in some way to reduce their overall ask.
Um, I don't know for sure. Scott, do you have a, a better sense of that?
Uh, I mean, there's only a couple of different departments that would have that type of revenue, um, set aside parks, cemetery. Uh, the CONCOM also has, it's not a huge amount of fees, but they do collect some fees. Same thing with planning as well. Uh, most of our other departments, like the board of health, we have the, we have the revolving fund now. Uh, so a lot of that probably wouldn't be able to offset a lot of their requests. I think that the the biggest ones would probably be the cemetery and parks commission, because they do have, uh, pretty significant, uh, reserves.
Yep. Thanks. I, I just don't have a sense of, of what the balance sheet looks like, how many, how much dollars are socked away here and there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thanks. Okay, Scott? Go ahead.
Uh, so that, that's, uh, that's what I had. So I think it might be a, I mean, I, we can certainly do a directive to all the departments to look at potentially uh, doing that, uh, using available funds that are already existing.
I mean, I got the impression from many of the budget hearings that you know, people were, were trying to be as economical as possible and they were kind of, not necessarily at bare bones, but I mean, they weren't. I don't, I don't get the sense that we've got really, you know, padded budgets by any means from any department. I mean, I think these are all you know, reflecting pretty much the reality of, of anything from from the condition of vehicles to the, you know, the needs to hire staff to, um, you know, just some increased costs for operation and so forth. I'm
Well, agreed, totally.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, it's simply because, um, Scott asked for level services. And what we're seeing is mostly wages which we committed to and benefits which are what they are. And, you know, we, we could look at that as a policy issue down the line. But it's, it's like always, it's personnel costs. It may also propagate through from the school department with personnel costs and hopefully not continued bad bookkeeping. Right? So, so we need to be buffered from those really big swings that are just outside of our vision.
Mm-hmm.
But we committed to the salaries and the benefits flow. And so, um, I agree, this, this looks like level services to me with a couple of exceptions. Um, but you know, at level services is in the context of the commitment to salaries and I stand behind that.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I mean, I think with a few exceptions, we've got two or three requests for increased hours, but other than that, you know, it does reflect the commitment we had made to do some, some salary adjustment, I believe.
Minimal hours, and I can't remember an instance where that triggers benefits.
Um.
I mean, there may be one, but I don't think that that's what it was doing.
Yeah, there might have been one or two that would take it up over the nineteen, I think, um, but I don't remember. So yeah, uh, Scott, go ahead and, and figure out how you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, that was just the, the library's, uh, the budget. So I know that, uh, John had requested up to twenty-five hours for that one position.
Okay.
Which would make it benefit eligible. Um, all the other positions that, uh, have an increase of hours um, are still under nineteen or they've already been benefit eligible. So there wouldn't be any, uh, outside that one position, there wouldn't be any new positions that would become benefit eligible.
Right.
Just, I think in the, in the future, I think it's, uh, you know, adhering to that twenty hours is, is really important. Um, especially if we're going to be increasing hours, uh, when we're paying twenty thousand dollars plus in benefits, and then if we add just a few hours, um, you know, we, we'd essentially be, be paying double what the salary might be for a part-time employee or someone who works twenty or twenty-one hours. Uh, so like, for example, the, uh, the assistant town accountant was budgeted at twenty-one hours, so I, I was able to reduce that down to nineteen.
Mm-hmm. I was just gonna ask, had you reduced anybody? Okay, so that's one, for example, okay. And just remind me the, the percentage of, um, the percentage of, of what benefits are, is it like thirty, thirty-five percent or something?
Uh, roughly, yeah.
On top of salary, right?
Right. Um, the state uses about forty percent when we do the hourly, uh, grants, and we have to, eh, we have to account for the time that we spend. They usually do about forty percent on top of the, uh, the base.
Wow. Okay. All right. So I don't know what we're showing you. This is, uh, Parks or somebody operating here?
Yeah, that, that's, this is the parks.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I can, I can start discussing with other, with town departments to see where we can start trimming down.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or finding, you know, alternative revenues that we put into the other revenue sources.
Okay. Dan, question?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, going back to what percentage off, we were like one percent off, right? So to me, it's not not that big of a stretch from where we are to get to where we need to be. Um, I thought is it'd be, I think the best, I think I said this last year too, um, the, the way to, I, I would find it easy is to make this decision is to understand which of these items are discretionary, like non-salary, um, things that we must pay, uh, like, like paying funds back to people, whatever, um, i- in a list such that we, we have it just the, just the discretionary things. And then we can, we can look at them and prioritize which ones we wanna try to keep, would want to reduce, all that good stuff. So my suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a anticipated, uh, free cash certification date? Because that potentially would be another source of money.
Right.
It, the schools have promised to get everything ready by the fourteenth. So, uh, this Friday, they should have everything that Bradley needs to, uh, certify free cash.
Okay. I do know tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow night's Wednesday, we're taking up the Norris budget. I, I don't anticipate it being the two percent placeholder that's there. I think the initial request is gonna be higher. Now, just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to put something in there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was a placeholder. And then the four percent though, you were relatively a bit more comfortable with from the, um, from the regional?
Uh, that was just a quick conversation I had with the superintendent, so I haven't received anything officially yet.
Okay. All right. So I believe they met last night too. I don't know how well they did on their budget stuff last night. Um, okay, so I mean, what would other people think about a way forward? I mean, one way would be just to say, okay, just to have Scott, you know, just meet briefly with the various departments and, and commissions and committees that have budgets here and say, okay, is there a way to, something out of here that you might find another source of funding for? You know, grants are great, but again, you gotta apply for grants. You may get them, you may not. So it's really, I don't like budgeting, assuming you're gonna get a grant, right? So I wouldn't recommend that myself, but Scott, John, go ahead.
No, I think Dan had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Oh, th- thank you, thank you very much, Sean. Um, um, are the schools the only ones? Oh, thank you, thank you very much, Sean. Um, um, are the schools the only ones that are. Variable right now? The ones that we don't have all the data on? Are there any others that we, we're missing data on?
Um, you know, there might be a small commission like Open Space, but that, that's like five hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, yeah, nothing significant. Okay, great. So yeah, I think it's, it'll be, making this decision will be a lot. More obvious once we have those two things, uh, nailed down, those two school items. It was, those are pretty, pretty big line items. Um.
And just while we're looking at this, Scott, why do you have, uh, transfer and water department, um. Highlighted. I mean, I realize these are enterprise funds, but what were you, why are they highlighted here?
Uh, those aren't taken from the general fund, so those are self-sufficient, uh, so I don't include them into the.
So they're not added in anyway. Okay, okay.
Can I, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
So regarding the assessors, I was just looking at Bradley's most recent report. And there's a couple, now granted, we're only partially the way through the fiscal year, but. There's a couple, uh, there's a consultant line that we haven't spent very much on, uh, and I, I'm gonna ask Dave. If he expects a lot more to be spent there, that, that could. You know, which is a good idea. It could cover his request for increased hours. Um, if in fact we use fewer consultants, that's part of it. So, um. I just know that's something I want to chat with Dave Zagorski about.
Okay.
So I don't wanna rehash everything, but I just wanted to flag that. I may have missed it in the conversation, but that Scott was gonna revise and update revenue estimates. And that there was some. Pretty big variable bars around the revenue lines. Not the ones we said, uh, but state aid, I guess, or. Or the stuff that's related to roads and schools that also flow mostly from the state. I, I, I may be misremembering, but will we have a clear view of those revenues?
Uh, for our, our roads or chapter ninety, we, we have those estimates in, so it's gonna be an increase, but that doesn't go towards our, our, um, our general budget. The chapter seventy, which is the schools does.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we have the, the governor's budget on the cherry sheet now, but we may get some updates on that. Is that true or no? Or that's it?
Hopefully it's gonna be, I don't, I haven't seen the timeline recently for the state legislature. But, uh, obviously they're gonna, the House and the Senate are gonna have to pass their versions and they're gonna have to come to an agreement.
Right. So we, we may still have a wait for some of those funds, um, to, to be truly finalized, right? But I think, you know, if we can really, you know, if the school, I know, um. Dawn up at central office has been working really hard to try and rectify some of these accounts and just. Get things put back together again. Um, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that they're gonna be presenting something to Bradley hopefully by Friday, because that can really. Allow us to move forward a bit too. But I think. I guess my thought would be that, you know, to go ahead and, and figure out which ones, from what you've heard, I mean, you've. You've been through these budgets individually with the various departments or commissions and then you've. Heard them again and you, you know, we've, you've, you're probably most familiar with everything that everybody has said, so. I think I would just recommend that as a next step that you, you know, figure out the timing to. Have a, you know, half an hour conversation or most with, with many of the key ones where you think there is some. Possibility of finding another source of revenue, uh, for their, their need and see how that goes for, uh. Another round before we, um.
I, I can definitely do a, a recommendation. Like, there are things like, for example, in the police department budget, we estimated just like a two percent increase. Uh, for the union negotiations, so we can take that out of the budget this year. And, and still go forward with contract negotiations, but fund that through a special town meeting or from free cash during next year. I, obviously we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna have, uh, negotiations done by July first.
When's that contract up?
Uh, July first.
Of, of this year?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a, a, a payment we need to do, but it, it could be deferred is what you're saying?
Exactly. It's about, I think, twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so there may be some strategies like that. I guess that would be my thought. I mean, I don't know that we're gonna, you know. Be able to sit here and, and nickel and dime things here tonight by any means. Um, so I think that would be my recommendation would that. We let Scott go ahead and, and try to meet with. Areas where he thinks there might be a way to find some alternate sources of funding to meet their needs, um. And or, you know, talk about the wisdom of what they want to do about increasing hours or whatever. I'm not sure what it is, but. Have that discussion and then we'll get back again. We, we're meeting again on the eighteenth, is our regular meeting anyway. And that maybe, maybe by then we'll know a little bit more about what the school has come in with. If you guys are. Meeting tomorrow night, John, and then we'll have a little bit of news from the regional on Friday. Um. So maybe by Monday, Tuesday next week, we might have a little bit more information to act upon. Um, what's anybody think about that?
I'm, I'm okay with that, but could we also look at. What payroll dollars are currently being spent out of ARPA that have either flipped or not flipped, so that. Ultimately, if we end up having to get to a conversation about cuts. I'd wanna clearly identify that this is the first group we should look at, whether we cut it or not. Before we start looking into regular staff, because I'm not hearing anybody here suggesting that we're just gonna move towards an override.
Nope.
Right, so.
No.
I don't think it would be.
We could have that list.
Yeah. No, definitely not doing that. And I, I don't think there's a whole lot of, of ARPA salary right now. As, as Scott mentioned, the CONCOM agent has already flipped over to general fund, which I didn't realize, so.
I, but I would argue that should be on the list, because.
Yeah, okay.
And, and again, we, maybe we take no action on it, but.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. Is that clear, Scott? What, what John is suggesting?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I mean, I definitely don't think that there's gonna be need for an override this year. Um, for that, I think that we can manage within the resources that we have. Uh, some of the things like might be a little bit of a difficult decision. Not filling positions, things like that, but I, I think we would be okay.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Well, and hope, hopefully most of these, I mean, I know the, the two firefighter paramedics are. About, well, one of them is about to be filled, I think, is what I heard. And then another one is certainly being recruited and then. Uh, I know Randall's got his, his staff and he's trying to still. Hire on, so hopefully we will have, you know, more people. Filling our roles here, coming in the, in the new year. That would be nice, not have so many vacancies too, but. Um, in the past, we've had the vacancies, therefore we've had some insurance money to play with that we haven't used and we've been able to pull that, but we. You know, we shouldn't keep on doing that. And now the insurance costs have gone up too.
Yeah, this, this year I definitely wouldn't depend on the insurance money going up, uh, having any leftover with eighteen percent, so.
Yeah.
But then the, um, an, another possibility is, um. The current approved to be hired, but not yet hired positions throughout the town. Um, you know, whether it's the COA or the highway department or the fire department. I'd be curious to understand from each department head's point of view. What do they, what's their best, yes, anticipated hire date? You know, for, and it doesn't have to be, you know, I don't need the answer tonight, but. Like, I think Randall has four spots, right? Three labors or so, something in there. He's got X amount of spots. He may have a great pool of candidates and he's just waiting for the budget to approve, or this is timeline saying, I'm not even gonna get to this until October. Right? So, again, there might be some wiggle room there, but it's only one ti, one-time fixes. That we have to fund fully in the next year.
Right. And I think there's one in the, excuse me, there's one in the water department as well, I believe. Um, so there's.
Yeah, but that comes out of the enterprise account.
It does, that's true. That is true. Yeah. But there, there's a handful of positions that are, you know, not currently filled, but not, not too many. But yeah, I think we should be able to put together a list like that, Scott, and. And just, you know, here's the, there's, you know, the salary range idea or whatever, and, and here's the anticipated month that. Somebody might be able to be, be on board or something like that, because. You know, a couple of months here and there can save a few thousand dollars, depending on when they're hired on, right? If they're, not everybody's necessarily on at the beginning of a fiscal year, so. Okay, so any further questions on the budget? If not. Um, oh, so what else have we got here coming up? Um. I had one and I guess this is under a different one. Um, I have to pull up my agenda here. Um, or can somebody put up the agenda? We were gonna, we have a couple, um, couple of things on the screen. I think, uh. Next up, we just have a resignation, right? It's, Scott, you might pull up that agenda. Sorry, I, I can't catch mine at the moment. And then, um. Thank you, thank you. Uh, okay. So we do have one, one resignation, resignation unfortunately. Um. Our fellow board member Cindy Palmer has put in her resignation. Uh, to resign from the select board and actually we have an error here on the, um. On the cover page, um, this was a typo from last meeting. Uh, Cindy's actual resignation date, I believe Cindy is April fourth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and that would be your, your last day, uh, working as a select board person. And then that, that translates over to the various other committees and roles for which you are a liaison. Uh, as well as you were elected, I believe, on Board of Assessors, is that right? Cindy?
I think your video is frozen. Well, there she goes, yeah.
Oh, did we lose her?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, anyway, uh, we have a resignation, so I think the, the effective date would be April fourth, not May, May first. So, um. I'll make that motion, uh, that we accept the resignation of Cindy Palmer from the Southampton Select Board and any other boards. That she might have been elected to, um. As of April fourth. Yeah, Scott.
Question, if you don't accept it, can you force her to still stay in Southampton?
Uh, please, please.
I, I would vote no.
I was gonna, I, I was gonna say with great, great appreciation and, um. And sadness, uh, I would. A mover, second the motion. Uh, if not for Cindy, I wouldn't be in this mess, so. You can, you can thank her for that too.
There you go.
I, 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 I really wanna thank her for her many roles in town. But the one that she'll be remembered for. Hopefully forevermore is the outreach she's done to landowners in town to help conserve. Oh, man, the most precious places in town and our water resources, so. Um, with deep, deep appreciation, um, that's the second.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. And I think unfortunately, I have a feeling we lost Cindy to this, but she'll hear the recording if nothing else. So, um, I, I.
She may have recused herself without announcing.
She might have disappeared, yeah, okay.
Johnson, aye.
It could be. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let's roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
LaVella, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Yep, falls aye. Okay. And we'll assume that Cindy's not here to vote on herself, so. Four, four zero at this point in time. All right. Resignation accepted with regrets. Uh, we really will miss all of Cindy's contributions and we know that she'll still be in and around town. She's not moving very far away, just next door. Um, so we'll see her no matter what. Um. I think this was not going to be our regular, um. Meeting, Scott, so I think last time we went through. Town administrator and select board reports, but if we have anything in particular. From your end that you'd like to share, please, please go ahead and do that, Scott, and then I'll hold off on anybody else's meeting. Till our next meeting, because I think we gave them all last week. So Scott, anything new and updated that's, uh, happened in the last few days?
Uh, just two quick things. Special town meeting on the twenty-second. It's, uh, Saturday at ten AM. Uh, the webpage is up with a warrant. Uh, Robert is gonna be doing his reading. Thursday night. Um, so everyone can look for that. And then. Uh, if anyone would like a free cup of coffee, please stop by Dunkin' Donuts, uh, between seven thirty and nine to have a talk with, uh, myself and the two chiefs. About anything public safety related.
That's on Friday?
On Friday, yep.
Friday morning. Okay, and you're gonna livestream that too?
Yeah, it's gonna be livestream too, so if you want to.
Oh, Lord.
Type it in.
Okay, live Facebook.
So, so I appreciate that, uh, this was, uh, announced on Facebook and I'm glad that we're amplifying it here for the public. Friday morning, coffee with the two chiefs and the town administrator. I, I, I can't believe it, but. I'm camera shy, so, uh. How do I work this? All right, here's, here's a cup of Dunkin' for you.
What?
Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts, one more time. You have to repeat the telephone number three times in the commercial.
Dunkin' Donuts, seven thirty to nine, on Friday.
There we go. All right. Good, so that's, um, that's the main things that are happening, um, for the coming week here. I know, uh, Scott's been busy on, on budget issues and so forth, so that's been taking up most of your time, I believe, um. But, uh, we will, we will have a regular meeting, uh, next week and we'll fill in the details on any other events that have happened. Or news that needs to be shared. Um, I don't know if there's anything, unless somebody's got anything urgent out of select board reports. If not, I'll go on to regular new business. We have. A couple of things just to talk about and then that will be pretty much getting toward the end of our meeting. Uh, we have, um. First of all, we've got a snow budget update, uh. Need to do a declaration of a winter emergency and I know our highway superintendent's here. So Randall, uh, feel free to come on in and Scott, we'll turn it over to you as to what we need to do.
So unfortunately, we had some of the white stuff this year come down, um. We're about a hundred thousand dollars over budget in our snow removal funds so far. In order for us to continue to deficit spend, um. We have to do a declaration of a winter emergency. Uh, so Randall had requested that through an email that I forwarded to everyone.
Right. Yep. Randall, you wanna kind of just recapsulate that for those that are listening?
Sure, so, hmm, well, I, I just, I pulled up some statistics and the number we're at right now is one oh six, uh, like a hundred and seven thousand. Um. We've had a, what people might think is a pretty easy winter, um, but as we talked about in our budget hearings. We've been, um, appropriating far less than, I've been arguing that we've. We actually spend what it takes to, to respond to a winter. Um, we've had two pretty easy winters, um. FY twenty-four. Um, we, we've been budgeted at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred for the past. Forever. Uh, I, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years of data and it's always been set at that. Uh, FY twenty-four, for example, we spent a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, FY twenty-three, a hundred and eighty thousand. So we have pretty good data on what it takes to respond to a winter. And those, like those last two winters I just mentioned. Were mild in comparison. This year, uh, we've had a little more weather to respond to. We've had fif- fifteen treatment events and seven plow events, and those are events that happened off hours. Um, I don't track as well the, uh, responses that we do on regular business hours. Um, we've spent, uh, or we've used about sixteen. Uh, hundred tons of salt. And fourteen hundred tons of sand to respond to it. Um, we've already used over a hundred tons of, uh, cold patch. To, uh, fill potholes. Some of them open up the same day because they have, uh, just traffic pulls cold patch out. And gravel roads, we've had to, uh, use a hundred and forty-one tons of crushed rock. To, uh, put down into the mud so that cars can get through, through those roads. So all of that costs money and like I said, we are running, um. A deficit in winter expenses of a hundred and seven thousand roughly. Uh, and winter's not over. I suspect we could have two more storms. Um. Wages, uh, are currently, uh, I might end up with some left in wages, but, uh, es- estimates right now. Uh, without any overtime, we would be at twenty-nine thousand, just a hair over, uh, for the next three payrolls. And we have forty-nine thousand and change left, um, in the account. So we're getting close. Uh, at the end of the day, we're probably going to be nearly a hundred thousand over on winter roads, so we'll have to find some way to.
So by declaring a, a, um, a winter emergency, that would allow you to deficit spend, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there a particular language we need, Scott, or is, um. John, you're, you're our usual motion giver. Can you craft something brilliantly?
I have templates of previous letters that I can forward.
Okay.
I, I do wanna just give some credit to, uh, the highway department and Randall, uh, this year. If you've tried to buy rock salt in the last month, um, you can. Know that's pretty much non-existent at any retail store. Uh, now try buying hundreds of tons of it. You know, uh, so not only do they use, were able to find some, but they were able to really, um, make it last as, as long as possible and, uh. All doing that while only at fifty percent, uh, staffing power.
Well, we've got some good calling guys in addition to our, uh, full-time guys. We got a great, a great crew.
Mm-hmm. No, that's great. Yep. Mm-hmm. No, that's great. Yep. Okay, so we need a motion, uh, to, um. To declare a winter emergency for this year?
I'll make a motion to declare a winter emergency for fiscal year '25 and authorize the deficit spending from the winter. The two winter road accounts.
Franklin?
Okay. All right, second by Stephen, okay? All those in favor, roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
John Sinai.
LaValle, aye.
Cindy, are you there? Thought I saw her iPhone. She was trying to get back in. She got booted out, but.
Uh, no longer. She's out.
Okay, Falls, aye. Uh, okay, uh, motion's approved. So yes, that, that should hopefully take care of that, Randall, for what you need to do.
Well, crop our fingers for no more.
Right. I mean, this has been certainly a gorgeous couple of days. If we can hold on to it a little longer, it would be nice.
Some daffodils poking up through the soil, so let's, uh.
Gosh, please. They may get a rude, they may get a rude awakening in a few more days. You never know. All right. Thanks, Randall. Appreciate it. All right. And the next item up, uh, Chief, I don't know if you had other things you were looking for, you were gonna share first, but, uh. If you didn't find anything, that's fine. Um. Oops, I'm just gonna come back here. Um, we have the discussion of the. Request for a comfort dog. Yes, I think you had presented to our budget and we wanted to, um, go through it tonight a little bit.
I did. I just, thank you for the time. I. I wanted to obviously. Present this and see if I could get the endorsement of the, of the Select Board and the Town Administrator. I think it's a great program. I recognize through this discussion that there won't be funding for this. Um, however, I believe that, um, I feel confident that we'd be able to get, um, donations to support this. Um, based on the budget that South Hadley, their draft budget. They estimated about the same amount that would cost us about forty-five hundred dollars a year. That's just to get off. Um, other than that, the real, the pricing isn't, uh, you know, through, if we can get. Uh, donations for it, I think we can support it. Um, I, and you could put the burden on me for that. The, um, only thing is I would need the endorsement of the Select Board to, to proceed forward, and I'd also need, um. Your authorization to solicit donations. For this project.
Okay. Um, and. Do I see the dog in the background?
That is, uh. Officer, uh, Latour. This is a, a officer-owned dog, so we wouldn't own the dog. This is Simba, that's Simba that he's with. Um, the interesting about, thing about Simba is his sibling is the comfort dog for the Pentagon. Uh, so he's from, he's bred to be a comfort dog. He's been, um. Uh, Dan and his fiance's dog for, since he was a puppy and he's highly trained. And he's in the process now of certification through a, a bona fide, um, therapy program, therapy dog program.
Mm-hmm.
If I had that many treats, my dog would be well behaved too.
This is regular table. It's, it's basically a dinner.
I, I'm bringing in a dog in the future of my budget hearings.
There you go.
That's unfair.
Yeah, I think, I think when you presented it, Chief, you were talking, I mean, there was a, a registration and a, a training fee or something that had to happen to get the dog enrolled in the therapy program, is that right?
Right. The, the registration fee is, is, is fifty-five dollars upfront. It's thirty dollars for there every year, every year after. This is for the Alliance of Therapy Dogs membership. That's what, uh, this dog would be, um, under. Um, and it's approved by the American Kennel Club. They also offer the Alliance of Therapy Dogs also, so the, the concern, the big thing, the big ticket item here, the big concern is liability insurance, right? Um, anticipate this dog biting anybody? No, but you never know what could happen. Um, so. The Alliance of Therapy Dogs. They, um, they will. Provide insurance for three hundred fifty dollars a year. It's a one million, uh, dollar, um. Insurance. With a two million dollar aggregate. It also has ten thousand dollars medical if injured at, at, at work with a deductible of a hundred dollars. Now, I've reached out to other, um, police departments and asked about their program. So Belcher Town. Northampton, Hatfield and South Hadley all have, um. Comfort dogs or upcoming comfort dogs. A lot of these are still puppies and then they're training. They are all officer-owned dogs. So it's the, the municipality does not own them. I contacted Maya for insurance and they essentially told me that if it's in. It's not a municipal asset, they will not insure it. I did receive information from the chief from, from South Hadley that Maya is insuring their dog. Um, but I, when I reached out to Maya and I spoke with our rep, she said, no, not if it's a, uh. Not if it's a, um, a, uh, not a town asset. So with that being said. Belcher Town, they have their dog insured through a local, um, insurance company. Bell and Hudson. Their dog is insured per year for two hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year. Hatfield, um, is insured through a local, uh, insurance company, Weber and Grinnell, which I think is now the Alara Group. Their coverage is eleven hundred dollars per year. And again, South Hadley is, is Maya, from, from my understanding from that chief. So I would like to try to, if, if, if this is something that the, the Select Board endorses and we can, um. Proceed with donations. I'd like to start, I'd like to start this program and get it moving. Um, but I can't do that without the Select Board giving me the, uh, the go-ahead. And obviously provide you with further updates as we go along.
Right. Anybody have some questions, John? Yeah, I know you.
So Ian, would you envision if you were fundraising that the, these funds raised would go into that restricted account that falls onto your department?
It would go strictly to the dog. It would be, I, I would say it would have to go to an account strictly for the, the dog, because people are donating specifically for that reason.
Right. So our, our vote would have to authorize the creation of a standalone account. That doesn't close out at the end of the year. And fall to free cash, right? It's.
Yes, a revolving.
Like a revolving account or a.
Right.
Restricted gift.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, restricted gift account.
And that would cover, that would cover what things though? That would cover like vet bills and food and that kind of thing?
Well, that's something that, so certain towns. According to their policy, um, a lot of it, because it's, it's a, the dog is owned by, by, by Officer Hurley. Um, obviously we'd want pay for food because we're using it as an asset. Um, certain annual, um, vet. Vet, um, uh, checkups because it's his dog, you know, he might be able to pay for that, but if we have the funding, we could support it as long as there's an, there's an, an understanding that, you know, um. Short of. Uh. Working on the job injuries or liability issues, um. If we don't have those fundings through donations, he would have to support that funding. Because it's his dog.
So I would like to move that we support the establishment of this fund. That can receive restricted donations. For this purpose. And. The expenditures would be subject to, um. Sort of a contract or scope of services, uh, agreed with the officer provider. And. The department with approval of the Select Board. I mean, I, this would, this would just, uh, make explicit what. The range of things are. It's not including the retirement fund for. Yeah. The officer and the dog. But there's a range of things that you could enumerate and say, we agree that. This is. Sufficiently beneficial to the town. That we're going to allow a com- essentially completely independent. Private fundraising thing to run.
Yeah. If I, if.
Let, let's have a second and then we'll further discuss or.
I was gonna say, Steve, if, if I could reword that motion for you.
Okay, go ahead.
If you don't mind. So that the Select Board votes to support the comfort dog program and establishes a restricted account for the purposes. Of receiving donations. To solely be spent on the comfort dog program. Within the Southampton Police Department and the expenditures are at the authorization of the police chief. And. At the conclusion of the program, a hundred years from now, any unspent funds be donated to a animal shelter.
Mm-hmm. Cindy? Oh, Cindy's back.
I. Apologies for going in and on. I don't know what happened, but I second the motion.
All right, thank you. All right. Any, any further discussion?
I'll, I'll bat it back to you, um.
Yeah.
Um, an animal welfare organization. Fair enough. Just, just because. A hundred or a thousand years from now, we, we don't know what that will look like.
True.
No, I'm, I'm totally supportive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Okay, we got it. So does that, just, just a couple of points of clarity. So did I hear that? We'd want something in writing between the officer and the chief about how this would work, what, what kinds of expenses would be. Reimbursable from the funds raised, is that correct?
Yeah, I think like an MOU. Right, just here, here's the understanding, what's going to be covered, what's not, what's discretionary.
So I think that we'd allow, you know, for you guys to negotiate that, but then we'd appreciate having a, a copy of it for Select Board just for our own informational purposes, okay?
Sure, I would, I'll do that. And I also have a, I already have a draft policy that I use from all the other, you know, I took bits and pieces from all the other local departments that have. Officer-owned dogs. That seems to be the trend, officer-owned dogs. Versus canines that are used for, uh, tracking or drug enforcement. Those seem to be municipal assets.
Right. Now, can I ask a couple more questions? I just want a little bit more clarity, sorry.
Sure.
Um, would this dog only be on duty when this particular officer is on duty or?
He's the, he's the only handler, that's correct.
The only handler, okay.
Yep.
And that would be both at the station or maybe if you were needed at the school or some other place or out in the field, that would be the case, right?
That would be that, that would be the case. Um, you know, uh, situations, the, the dogs really are for therapy purposes, so. You know, if we go to a call for service where there's DCF or we have, uh, a child that's been assaulted or. There's a lot of applications that we can, that we can use this dog for, but also just for general community policing and service, you know, um. For vets and, um. We can use it for a host of other activities, community events, um. Uh, the school, if the school, um, is, is, uh, open to having the dog visit the school, whether, whether it's at Hampshire Regional or even. Uh, Norris or even Hampshire Regional, um. That's, that's the intent. And also for our officers.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna say, I, I think, you know, probably one of the most, um, deserving beneficiaries will be the officers themselves as well as other. Other first responders, EMTs, et cetera, that have seen, I'm sure, more than your share of, of things that you'd rather not see on.
Yeah, yeah. And as you know, I've been a, a advocate of officers' mental health.
Correct.
Through previous, you know, negotiations and contracts, so this is just one more thing I wanna, I wanna, uh, employ.
Okay, very good. All right, could I take a vote, please? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye. John Sinai.
Palmer, aye.
Dan?
So, so sorry, I had to find the button. Um, LaValle, aye.
Okay, Falls, aye. All right. Motion granted. Thank you. And I think, uh, yeah, fundraising sounds like a great idea. I don't think you'll have too much problem doing that.
I, I don't think so either. I, I think we'll, we'll be okay with that. I just, um, and, and one other thing is, and perhaps. Uh, I'll need some guidance on this is for liability insurance, um. I would like to go local, like the other agencies are doing, um, just because there's a connection. So, um, if that's something that I'm going to reach out to, you know, perhaps some, some, you know, uh, the local. Uh, insurance companies.
Sure. Yeah, because you, you said you already got an answer from Maya that they were not.
Maya, it was, it was a hard no. And I, which I couldn't understand because, again, the chief from South Hadley told me that they negotiated with Maya, but, um, perhaps they have a different agent and, but.
Right.
Pretty clear cut. And it kind of follows that, that, uh, suggestion based on my research with the other departments, because everyone else is getting. Local, um, insurance companies to do it.
Sure, okay. Sounds like a plan.
Maya won't even allow like, like petting zoos or events with the animals at this point.
Yeah, it's really changed. So, good. Well, thank you, Ian.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, and say goodbye to Simba and is it Officer Hurley, is that right?
That's right.
All right. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Guys.
Okay, um, I don't know if we had any other things on the agenda. I don't think so tonight. Um. We'll go back to our regular meeting on the 18th. Our next meeting will be the 18th and. Um, one of the things that we will, we're a little bit late on, it's my fault, on the last couple of weeks, um, we need to actually. Recognize that Scott has been with us for an entire year already. Somehow a year is. Gone by very fast. Um, so we will be starting to work on his performance appraisal. Um, so we will be taking that up next meeting and. Going through a little bit of the process of how that works, okay? Other than that, I don't think we have anything else, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, to adjourn.
All right. Second, all right. We, I guess we should vote. All those in favor?
Palmer, aye.
LaValle, aye.
Falls, aye. John's an eye. All right, perfect. I think we will call ourselves. Adjourned, and this is at about, uh, seven forty-six, thereabouts, according to my watch, but thereabouts.